Health matters is linked with wealth matters. My daughter, who is starting to be a nurse, comes up and tells me of experiences she has when she goes for clinical. She said, mommy, most of the people that die in hospitals die because they don't have money. I also beg bold to say many of them died because they didn't have the knowledge. The knowledge that can stop you from dying or being in pain, being in stress is going to be shared here with you. And sometimes it puts you have money, but if you don't have the knowledge, they could still die and die painfully. We have stress all over the world, and the pandemic problems all over the world. We have health issues all over the world. And that is not far from the fact that we are in an evolving world that has all these factors touching our lives. So without much ado, straight to what we want to talk about, what proper solutions to you that will get you out of possibly fear of pain, the fear of death, the fear of illness, and also linked to it, the fear of poverty. So right away, I'll be introducing to you the very articulate, beautiful, intelligent, well-versed member of our phyto-science team, every team player, a great leader in our midst. And we call her Didi, her name is actually Mary Tinoi, and that's the reason why we call her Didi. It's an acronym, it's a business thing, we call Dollar Dispenser. Please welcome aboard with me this evening as we set the stage for you to be part of what we want to share. Tonight, Didi, I welcome you to the podium. Good evening.
Thank you. Good evening, and thank you so much. I appreciate you all inviting me here this evening. And I thank you all the people that have made it to the room. Am I audible? Micler?
Yeah.
Okay, good. Okay, so we appreciate you all. Thank you so much for making our time to be here. I've been tasked with letting us see the beautiful and the wonderful opportunity that has helped to restore hope, that has indeed transformed the lives of people. What we had to talk before now was not possible. And we are seeing the amazing, amazing results and testimonies being shared by people that have decided to look at this critically and apply this therapy. And I trust that as you're in the room this evening, please be a blank canvas. Come with an open heart, come with a mind to learn as we introduce you to this wonder, the wonder of our time, how your body can regenerate itself. So it is possible that your body can heal itself. One of the reasons why I'm so persuaded or why I got persuaded about this was when I understood the theory or when I understood incidences while growing up, and I'm sure you can also relate to it, that children, when they they get injured and maybe break a bone or lose a tooth, it easily grows back. Even without medication, the fracture will heal. So why is it easy for a child fracture to heal and it's extremely difficult for an adult fracture to heal? Almost throughout the the life of that person, if you have the fracture as an adult, you probably suffer that pain, you know, you suffer that that incident all through the rest of your life. You can manage it, but it will not totally reverse to how it was before the fracture. So are we saying that you as a child, what happened to you as an adult that made it difficult for for you, for your body to heal itself? So that came, that made me understand that as we grow older, there's cells, we have cells in the body that are designated to do the repair work. Your body is supposed to be able to heal itself. So but as we grow older, we lose that ability. So it falls on us now to deliberately discover how we can nourish those cells back to function so that they function exactly how they used to when we were way much younger. So that brings me to the discussion of today. Olufunmila, can we mute her? She will have interference there. Thank you. So it brings me to this discussion of the day. I want to introduce stem cell to you. But let me introduce myself first. My name is Mary Tinoi, AKA Didi. And by training, I'm a food scientist. And I came across this wonderful platform in the year 2017, 2017, and I have not looked back since then. Championing the cause of making sure that we enlighten people, that's the primary purpose first. Enlighten people, let people know that there is such thing as the body healing itself. There's such a thing called regenerative therapy. On regenerative medicine, and it is possible that the body heal itself. Seven years on now, by exactly February 1st, would be my seventh year with the platform. And we are wearing this all the way. The joy we get is when we see lives being transformed, when we see people being recovering from ailment, and we see people looking and being healthy. So with your permission, I don't have so much time, let me quickly, as much as I can, take you through this regenerative therapy under the platform of phyto-science. So if you're ready, let me just be sure we are good. Can I see some reaction from the room? Just to be sure that you are there and you can hear me. So please go to the reaction button and give me a thumbs up. It's just an indication that we are all in this together. Okay, so locate the reaction button. Fine, thank you. I see. Thank you. We need to see more people, hands up. I need to see, and I just want to be sure that you're with me. So I'm waiting for, okay, thank you. I see more hands. I see more hands. Thank you very much. Okay, so we are good to go. So in about 30 minutes or less, let's quickly run through this together. Please confirm to me that you can see my slides. Is it on slideshow now?
Yes, it's just coming up. Yes, you can see it.
Okay, fantastic. Okay. Um, we need to mute someone's mic. It's only someone's mic is noisy. Okay, sorry. Okay, so let's welcome you. Welcome to an amazing opportunity, the phyto-science opportunity, and the company Phyto-science is a company that is after ensuring that we live a quality life. And the quality life in this case now is healthy and wealthy. Like Mrs. Amorawaya said, health is the first wealth. It is very important that you are healthy, and while you're healthy, you need a means to maintain your health. So it is not enough to say that I'm okay and I'm healthy and I'm I'm okay. It's also very, very important for you to be able to sustain your health. So it's not about being sick alone. Health is defined by WHO, is not about sickness. It's not just about sickness. It's a total well-being. So as you're, as you're going to be healthy as well, you should also gone to be able to take care of your needs, you know, financial needs and social needs. If not, it has a way of interrupting, it has a way of affecting your health. So that's why we want to give you a complete package, how to be healthy and how to continue to maintain your health. So quickly, Phyto-science is a company located in Bandar Barubangi in Malaysia. With, that's where our headquarters is. And then the sole business of ensuring that everybody enjoys the regenerative therapy called plant stem cell, distributing it and also packaging with collaboration with a company called Mibebal Chemistry as you see as we proceed. So these are the brains behind the brand. We have a founder, Dato Tansu Laiteng Peng is late now. The co-founder, who happens to be his wife, Kwanshu Elantan, she's the one championing the cause of the business now, after the demise of her husband. And we have our CEO, Willie Too, young vibrant gentleman that is ensuring that everything is working as it should. Now, this is the company that Phyto-science collaborated with in the year 2012, when Mibebal Chemistry, a renowned company in Switzerland, headed by renowned scientists, the world-renowned scientists, please screenshot this and you can do your due diligence after today. Just Google Dr. Fred Suli. He is the brain behind the discovery of the plant stem cell called Othwiler Spatluba, otherwise known as Swiss apple. So he discovered that there's potential in this Swiss apple that the cells of the Swiss apples, the stem cells that is, has the ability to help the human cells regenerate itself, to encourage the stem cells of humans to regenerate itself. Because of what he discovered, he had to develop a technology to extract the stem cells, and he had to patent it. So it is patent. So Phyto-science haven't heard what Dr. Fazulu did, collaborated with Mibebal Chemistry. And that's where we have what we have today. So Phyto-science is now the owner of the patents, the formula, you know, of what we're going to be introducing to you this evening. Because of what Fred Suli did, so many awards are coming in for the company Mibebal Chemistry. We had the award from the Geneva Quality Area Award, Gold Category from France and ETC. Now, do we have spread? Yes, yes, we do. Presently, we are in 41 countries and counting. So that also shows you that we're expanding, and by the grace of God, more people are getting to know and enjoy what we offer. And we still plan to grow into more countries. Now, diseases are rising. This is a fact that we know. This is, this is, this is a fact that we see, and certain things are responsible for it. We have pollution, some we don't have control of, some we have control of, but most we do not have control of. If you are in Lagos, resident in Lagos, you will know a place called Oragun, Ojota area, where it's a dump site. If you're around that place, you can hardly breathe. Now, how do you control that? It's beyond your control. You can't, no matter how you say you want to walk past there and cover your nose, you're still inhaling things that are unhealthy. And I'm seriously praying that the government do something about relocating that place, relocating that dump site there, because it's horrible. And of course, they do burn this refuse. So, so many things that we are inhaling, we can say on our own, you can try to maintain your health by eating healthy and all that. What about the external factors like pollution that you cannot control? When COVID came, it came like a bang. It was beyond our control. It didn't matter that we had a way of monitoring our health. If it was, it was a pandemic, and we lost a lot of lives to COVID. So while we are thinking of the things we can control, also set your mind on the things that are beyond your control, that you need to see how best you can protect yourself. Sedimentary lifestyle, sedimentary lifestyle, sorry. Most of us these days, we hardly do the things that our forefathers, our grandmothers, our mothers used to do. Everything now is made easy. Everything can be gotten for you at the confines of your home, the comfort of your home. We hardly move even to get the remote. I'm equally guilty. The remote is just right there in front of you, and you have to call the kids from the room to help you get, it's as bad as that. You want to enter a cab. I remember growing up, we had to walk distances to the taxi park to get a cab. But now we're sitting at home, just on the phone, you just book your Uber, and it comes right to your gate and picks you up. You, 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 you get to a particular place, instead of going through the staircase, we are comfortable going with the elevator. We practically don't do much. And as it is, AI is not even making it easy for us. It has come to practically freeze our brains, like it does not even want us to think. If it has, if AI has its way, you, everything can be done for you. Now you don't have to even think of how to do, write a composition, write an essay, write a letter. AI will do everything for you, compose beautiful letters, you know, and essays and all whatnot for you. GMO, the foods that we are eating today, it's far from the kind of food we used to eat before. You buy veggies now two days, but if you stay two days, you are lucky. Less than 24 hours, if you take the same vegetables and look at them, you will not recognize them anymore. You know, so much is happening because they are modifying the foods. Exposure to radiation, that one we cannot run away from, all the screens, all the Blu-rays, you know, that we are getting from all sorts. They're looking at the screen right now. I'm looking at the screen. The reason why most of us have glasses on, if you notice, it has Blu-rays, what do they call them? To refract the Blu-rays so that it will reduce the level of the rays that, you know, that we are taking in. These things are injurious to our health, and we know that. So those don't put your mind to the conventional diseases that you know. They are coming from all sorts of areas, and the bad thing about them is that they, they, they are like slow poisons. You may not even realize that it's doing things to your body until later. You now start wondering, when they say you have this, like, where did it come from? Just like that, all of a sudden, no disease is all of a sudden. It just took you time to discover it, but it's there. It's there, it's burdening in the body. Over time, it will show itself. So how do we stay healthy? How can we be youthful? We need to go back to nature. Stem cells. That's the ultimate. We are not made of drugs. No matter how much drug you say, it can, it can never regenerate itself. It's just there to manage the situation, to manage the condition, but it cannot revert it to how the body was before. So we are not made of drugs. We are made of cell. And if you want to fix anything, whatever it is that the manufacturer makes, if it has a fault and you need to fix it, you must go back to the materials the manufacturer used in making it in the first place. I give you an example. Say you want to make a block. You, you have to go and get cement, right? You get sand, you get water and things like that to use to mold that block. Now, if that block has a crack, maybe a part of it chips off. If you want to fix that block back, you can't go and bring a foreign material that was not a composition of what you use in making that block in the first place. It won't work. You must go back to the materials you use in molding that block, which is the sand, cement and water, and whatever granite, if you like. You must go back to the main, the material that you use in making that thing in the first place. So that's how it is. What are your bodies made of? They are not made of drugs. They are made of cells. So the only thing that can fix the body 100% back how it was before is cells. It sells. So what are these stem cells? You've been hearing stem cells, stem cell. What exactly are they? By definition, stem cells are special cells called mother cells. Now, when you hear mother, what comes to you? The ability to reproduce, to birth. So mother cells means they have the ability to do what to bat cells. So with the amazing power to produce new cells that can transform into any tissue or organ in the body. So from this, it tells you that it's not all cells that can transform. So these special stem cells have the ability to change, to transform into cells of any part of the body for you, cells of any tissue or organ in the body. This is why it has the ability to treat over 200 life-threatening conditions, diseases. People struggle with this. They say, how can one thing do so much? How can you say one, one, what's it called? You give a recommendation, and somebody has cancer, and you say, go take double stem cell, go take crystal cell. Somebody comes with glaucoma, you say, go take double stem cell, go take crystal cell. Somebody comes with diabetes, the same recommendation, go take double stem cell, go take crystal cell. Oh, I have someone that has kidney issues, go take double stem cell. And somebody is wondering, how come any ailment I call or any disease I call is the same recommendation? That is even possible. How can it be born in shame like you say in Uruguay? This is the reason. It is because it has the ability to transform, to become cell of any part of the body. Let's look at it critically. Look at the human body as you can see on my screen. We have over 30 trillion cells in the human body. Stem cells are found in the body. They did not transform, they did not become any cell of the body. They are like spare parts. So if you look at how, how we evolved, we evolved from cells. Don't forget, we are a product of a sperm and an egg, a fusion of that. That's what this whole human body you are looking at today. That's how we started. That tiny sperm and the egg from the woman. The fusion, you know, give birth to cells. Now, cells, a collection of these cells became tissues, organs, and of course, the entire body system came out of that, talking about circulatory system, respiratory system, reproductive system, all the systems of the body. So the foundation is cell. So this is what we're saying. Your sperm is a product of cell, your kidney, product of cell, liver, product of cell, bone, product of cell, your lung, collection of cell, brain, collection of cell. So it does not matter. When you say a disease, what you're saying is the disease is named after a particular part of the body where it is found. At the end of the day, it's still the human body, it's still parts. And every part of the human body is a product of cells. The foundation is cells. So now we talk about stem cell. If the kidney is having issues, what made the kidney? That is the first question. Cells. Cells became tissues that became organ, and the kidney is an organ, right? So if there's a problem with the kidney, since the kidney is made out of cell. If you introduce new healthy cells that can become new cells for the kidney, what have you done to the kidney? You fixed it. You fixed it. The same thing with the liver, it's an organ. What's the foundation? Cells. So if a part of it is having issues, and you introduce new cells, what do you think will happen? The liver will heal. That's why the body has the ability to heal itself. Naturally, we all have these stem cells in our body. But the problem is, as we grow older, we lose them. It starts reducing. Don't forget, I said, I give an analogy at the beginning, when I said, if a child fractures, don't give that child anything and watch that child's bone. Even without any medication, the bone will, they will heal. It will heal. If a baby fractures now, watch that baby. Over time, that bone will heal. It will heal faster than when an adult fractures. A baby is a human being, and an adult is a human being. What is the difference? The stem cells. As that baby stage, it still has abundant stem cell, the body is still forming. So when there's a problem, there are a good number of stem cells that can go there and do what, fix the problem without medication. All you just need to do is to stimulate it, and they will go and do their work. But as an adult, no matter how we want to do it, you do not have the ability anymore like you did as a child. So the only way now is to externally introduce something that we go and increase the rate of stem cells you have, the number of stem cells you have, and the rate at which they work. If you can successfully do that, that bone will heal. The bone is calling for stem cells. So I hope that is understood. That is why, no matter the disease you talk about, you call and say, can it do it? The answer is yes, because the question I will ask you is, is that part that is affected, is it a part of the body? If you tell me the eye has issue, my question is, is that eye a part of the body? You say yes. The next question would be, that eye, was it formed from cells? It says yes. If it is formed from cells, then cells can heal it. It's just introduce more cells, new healthy cells there, and they'll go there to heal it. So part of our stem cells, everybody has stem cells. We are not giving you what you don't have. No, you have them already. But we are helping you increase their number so that they can do their job. At the age that everybody in this room is, the stem cell has reduced more than 80%. So you can never compare yourself with the, with the body of a child. That is why you can't do what you used to do 20 years ago. If you try it now, the body will, the body will tell you. But if you're able to revitalize the body, get the body charged up again, you start seeing yourselves doing things that, that you didn't think you can do at this age. Everybody uses stem cells every day. Every day we work it out. Every day you talk, you eat, you work, you are utilizing your stem cells, and you are using them up. Stem cells die. So as you grow older, they die, they die off. So if they don't have the ability of reproducing, then that is when we'll start having issues with healing. The stem cells also diminish with age. As you grow older, like we've established, it reduces lifestyle and environmental factors. Therefore, they need to be deliberately nourished. What are the potential uses of stem cells? We have seen stem cell work in most of these conditions that people thought were life-threatening and maybe the, is it lifetime conditions, they call them? The one that you tell you that you have to manage till you die, there's no, there's no solution. My dear news flash, stem cell has come to demystify all that. It is possible to get healed, and the, these are examples of diseases or conditions that stem cell has seen, they've seen huge potential in stem cell, including multiple sides cancer. Okay, so let me quickly just take you to the story of the apple, the plant stem cell. I did start that at the beginning. Now, this plant stem cell is called Twilas Patluba apple, a special apple that was discovered in Switzerland. And upon further investigation, Mibebal Chemistry found that that with just 0.01% concentration of this Swiss apple stem cell, it can help to regenerate 80% of stem cells in humans. That means if your stem cell is at 20% level, imagine an 80% raise of the number of stem cell in your body, what do you think your body will begin to do? It begins to perform and starts healing. It goes to where there are challenges, where there are problems in the body, and it starts fixing them. So that's why we say they are not drugs. They are not drugs. They're cells. The duty is to go to your body and help the depleted stem cell that is in your body that helps your body to re-heal itself, to increase their number and get them to work. So it's not about I am sick. What it does is, when there are healthy cells, it goes there to protect it. If there are damaged cells, it goes there to repair it. And if there are dormant cells, it goes there to help them and notch them back to work, to regenerate it. So it's complete. And I dare say, you need stem cells more even when you feel you are not sick. Because it's not only sickness that causes issues for us, aging also is there. Every single day you are aging. Every single day. So it's only a matter of time. There are some conditions that comes with age. So you need to protect yourself from them. What we're saying, definitely everybody is going to die ultimately, but want you to live a quality life while you are here. Don't live a life of dependency. Whatever a life, lifetime that God has given us to say, let it be one that you will enjoy, and people around you will also enjoy, not the one that you will strain people that are around you because you are suffering from one condition or the other. Live a quality, beautiful life. This was when the partnership was done, where we signed the MOU between Mibebal Chemistry and Phyto-science, making Phyto-science have the ownership, exclusive ownership, to rights to double stem cell and triple stem cell formulation and patent. Let's quickly go through the products. What's the point having a solution that you don't have a way it's going to reach, to reach out, I mean, reach to people? So when they discovered the stem cell in the Swiss apple, they had to put it in a way that it can get to you and I. Else we would have had to go to Switzerland and be queuing up to see how we can get this. And trust me, if we had gone through that route, it would have been too expensive for us to have access to. So how are they putting products? They are putting different products. I'm going to show you. And we have what we call crystal cell and double stem cell, similar. They are all plant-based. So it is safe, it doesn't have any after, what's it called, effect in the body. They are natural, made from the Swiss apple, burgundy grapes, acai berry, and blueberry. So it is safe, it doesn't have any after, what's it called, effect in the body, they are natural, made from the Swiss apple, burgundy grapes, acai berry, um blueberry. In the case of the crystal cell, there's an addition of the tomato, the crystal tomato. So and that also helps to um take care of conditions that has to do with tumor, say cancer, fibroids, cyst. You know, and skin, uh skin condition as well, because of the addition of that tomato extract, it goes an extra mile to take care of such um situations better. So generally, beyond what you can see on my screen, it's for your body total overhaul. There is no ailment you are going to mention that we will not recommend either of these two, or the two together, depending on what it is. There is nothing you are going to say, no matter the condition, you will always hear us say, use double stem cell, use crystal cell, or use the combination of both of them, depending on what you're trying to um resolve. How do you take it, just put it under your tongue, it's called the Somblingwa method. Because we want, the, the way it works, it, it goes straight to the bloodstream, it's like you taking intra, what they call it again? Is it in, eh, she's not coming. Intravenous injection, yeah, yeah, intravenous injection, yeah, it's like you taking that, so it works faster. Than when, I don't, yeah, don't be tempted to swallow it, we don't want it to go through the stomach process because of the state of the gut. The state of the gut is not as clean, so it might take a longer time for you to see the result. So that's why we advise, when you take a Somblingwa, you just lift your tongue up and empty the content on that there, then claps your tongue and allow it to dissolve. When it's done dissolving, drink a lot of water, there's a reason why we say that, because it needs hydration, hydrated environment to work. So if your body is not hydrated, it will mop up as much as it can, and that can start making you feel dizzy. So you need to drink a lot of water. Alright, so let's go to Snowfield Fod, Snowfield Fod is your complete detox. Snowfield Fod is um product made from snow algae. Snow algae pure, we don't have time to go into details of what snow algae uh pure is and mulberry leaf. But what it does is extremely, extremely good. It helps, if you are talking about anything that has to do with blood. This is your detox, this is the blood food. Cases like sickle cell anemia, in fact, I can almost give you money back guarantee, because we've seen too many. We've seen too many cases that we are no longer shaking when you say sickle cell, the best gift you can give someone with sickle cell is Snowfield Fod. The first thing you'll be arresting is crisis. That's the first thing you will arrest, you will find out that if the person falls into crisis, maybe the person used to fall into crisis every month, used to have experienced crisis every month. The first thing you notice that in the next three to four to six months, that person may not have a crisis. And if you have on the whole entire year, maybe not more than one or two. Then by the time you combine with double stem cells, it starts repairing the cell. And we've seen cases where the cell completely changed from that sickle look to the regular shape of the red blood cells. So it also helps for anything that is gastrointestinal problem, it helps to balance the acid alkaline count in the body, anybody that is sick is a boy that is too acidic. And diseases thrive in acidic environment, E G cancer, take away acidity from a cancer patient, the cancer patient will heal. Will heal. It's been established, it's not me saying it now, the, the scientists that discovered that was given a Nobel Prize. If you are able to eliminate acidity in the body, that's where you will hear, they don't allow cancer patients to eat red meat, um milk, flour based, things like that, the things that promotes acidity in the body is taken out of their diet. Because it's, it's like when you put stagnant water for mosquito, that's what acidic environment is for disease. So it will help to neutralize that, it will help to balance the acid alkaline count, repair and rebuild the hemoglobin and red blood cells. Like I said, excellent for sickle cell, fights infection, manage blood sugar, A T C, I don't really have so much time, so I need to rush this, who needs Snowfield, everybody. Everybody, beyond those that are listed here, everybody needs uh Slowfield, is your ultimate uh detox. And all you do is just put it in a water, put it in a fifty C L water, mix it and drink up, it will also help to regulate blood sugar there. Now let's come to actual plus, actual plus is a um is a drop. Um have a drop, made out of eighteen fruits, twelve vegetables, nine spices, as you can see, everything here is plant based. So it's digestible by the body, and it does not leave any residue. Eighteen fruits, twelve vegetable, nine spices, this is your best for diabetes. If you are serious about that diabetic case, add, add actual plus, and I tell you, once you add actual plus, you need to be checking um your blood sugar level. You know, because we don't want it to crash below the uh recommended um number, basically. So you need to, because actual plus is, is a fantastic immune booster, and it was specially designed for diabetes. Now, it can also help you recover fast from ailments, from different diseases. If you are recovering from an ailment and you want to use actual plus, ten drops a day, but if you're just using for body maintenance, five drops three times daily is fine. Don't forget, it's not a drug, but it works way beyond the drug. Now for the skin, not when I say skin, most people just assume beauty, it's not just for beautiful skin. It also helps for any skin related problem, E G bones. Um bones from what, hot water, bones from fire, you know, skin condition, so not just aesthetics in terms of cosmetic. Just not beauty, that it does that, it helps to reduce your spot wrinkles and skin tone and every other thing that you are seeing here. One thing I like Miracle Intense Essence for is, it lives after its name, the way it actually works is like a miracle. It helps to speed up wound healing. Apply Miracle Intense to any wood, read my lips, any wound, no matter what they have said about that wound. That this is a wound, even gangrene, and gangrene is a um wound that is as a result of long term diabetes, that does not heal. See Miracle Intense do miracle, it will live after its name, you'll be shocked at how it will heal up that wound. So beyond the cosmetic um purpose of Miracle Intense, of course, we want fine skin, we want, um we don't want saggy skin and all that, we don't want acne, we don't want um. Stretch marks and all that, Miracle Intense is fantastic for that, it also helps to heal uh wounds, and it's good for first aid, these things should be in your first aid box. Once there's any cuts at home, teach your children how to use it. Once there's any cut at home and they are bleeding, just spray Miracle Intense, the bleeding will stop. It arrests the bleeding, the bleeding will stop and it's not painful at all, in fact, it's almost like you just put water, you'll be, you will not even feel as if you did anything, it's like applying water. On that spot, but it will arrest the bleeding and it will heal the wound, if you have, what's that stuff that usually swells on skin? Ah, it's not, the name is not coming now, like blister, I just. And blisters and the likes, you know, those things that just come and swell your skin, just spray Miracle Intense on it, and you watch it, you watch it heal. Then we have H two O moisturizer as well, this is for uh firming up of your skin, anti wrinkle. Anti aging, raise fine line, this is my go to, this is my facial cream, this H two O must, it hydrates and moisturizes the skin, and a well moisturized skin will not wrinkle fast. Will not wrinkle, because it's, it's that, it's when the, the skin starts getting dry and flaky, that's the encourage wrinkling. Let's go to I I Q, because I don't have time, I think I'm even overdone, have I gone beyond my time, I'm not looking?
You're good, you're good to go.
Okay, so I I Q plus, this is brain food. Anything that has to do with the brain and the eye, I I Q is your plug, I I Q plus. See, I, this is something, I ha- I have, I have someone that buys this for the mom. That has dementia, is it dementia they call it, that one that they don't remember things, you just walk out, I can't remember which house it came out from, is dementia, right? This is what they use for her, and the recovery, the recovery has been amazing, this is what they buy, just few, was it not last week, you mean Madame, I'm Mrs Amura, I. You bought like nine packs of I I Q for some, nine packs for someone, and I was asking, what are they using it for? That is what the woman, no matter what she buys, she buys I I Q in box. I I Q is beautiful, personally, I saw I I Q work in a condition called Bell's Parcy. And I was amazed, we started that, we started treating with um double stem cell and crystal cell for about a week or two. The minute we introduced I I Q, in three, two, two, three days, the whole situation reversed. The whole drooping of the mouth and everything reversed completely. I I Q is a wonder, I don't even know how they came about this, but when it has to do with the brain, whatever condition that has to do with the brain. Brain tumor, stroke, you know, anything emanating from the brain, please introduce I I Q to the mix. Then when you say a child does not, uh, you call a child Oludu, a child is not Oludu. At times we don't understand that um children have this mental, uh memory loss or mental decline. You know, it's not because that they are not, the, let me not, let me not go into it as much, but the child is not, do, give your child that, I, this I I Q, then you will see the IQ. The IQ of that child will just go, you know, just go way up there, but it's. In and eyes. Now for weight management, we have what we call new foot and new light, notice I said weight management, not necessarily weight loss alone. Yeah, so we have new foot, we have new light, one thing I love about Phyto Science products that they go be. Signed to take care of, you see, new foot and new light helps to reduce cholesterol, it helps to increase, a new foot um helps to increase fat burn, aids in digestion. Prevent osteoporosis, a lot of women suffer that. And combining it with new light, you see amazing results, regular bowel movement, I love new light because once you take it like this, you empty your bowel, you feel light. And you feel good, and it also helps to improve cholesterol level, it also helps to maintain blood um glucose control, strengthen immunity. New light for me is almost like Snowfield, I see them work, see, because it's like a good detox. So combine the two and you can effectively manage your weight with that, all the products are certified, you know, uh by the U S F D A and by N A F D A. G M P certified, that's good manufacturer practice, vegetarian friendly, challah friendly, um and one hundred percent natural, because they are all plant based. Then I also like the fact that Phyto Science also tells you that beyond them certifying the product, they are also insured. So have what we call the Product Quality Liability Insurance, this is to further guarantee you that the product are insured. That means we are saying that we are sure of what we are giving out, if you can prove at any point in time that the product is injurious to your health, then you can sue. Because they are insured, so that's why we also encourage, that's why we also encourage. Okay, so that's why we also encourage that you pick up a package. Don't be tempted to want to buy a pack, we encourage you to pick up a package, why do we say that? When you pick up a package, your name is registered in the system against that product that you have picked. So in the advent of anything you can claim, because they can track. And see that indeed you bought this product, your name is in the system on this said date, see the batch number and everything, then it's easy for you to claim. But if you don't pick up a packet, if your name does not enter the system. Then if you want to claim, it's very difficult for you to claim, because it's almost like we don't know you, we are not sure of where you got this product from, you understand, so it makes it difficult. So it's easier when you pick up a package and you are duly certified that indeed you picked up this product from us, from the company itself. Let's just quickly show you one or two testimonies here, um this is diabetic gangrene, as you can see, that was the leg as at um April. What products did they use here, double stem cell, crystal cell, Miracle Intense, actual plus, and Snowfield. And the improvement under four months was amazing, see the leg, they said they could not heal, the leg that they said they had to amputate, four months later, look at the said leg, look at the same leg. So you see why we do what we do, this woman's leg would have been gone. If we didn't reach out, if we didn't speak out. If we had kept this message to ourselves, and said, I don't know what they're, I don't think they're going to accept it, we just talk anyways, if you accept it, fine, good for us, but if you don't, what can we do? So see, in four months, it moved from this to this. This woman had cancer. Bone marrow cancer, she was returned back home from, um I don't know what country it was abroad, I've forgotten now, because she's a Cameroonian. She was returned back home to die, it just told the, the sister that was taking care of her, that just prepare her, they've done all they can. After all the chemo and all that, see her then, when she was returned back, she was, she was just given the, uh what's it called? It showed that, sorry, we can't do anything, but see her months after, when the sister had about Phyto Science product and decided to give it a go. Now that her sister is one of our top leaders today, this was what brought her into the system, this aunt, this aunt's testimony made her say, no, I can't keep quiet on this. I have to make sure more people know about this, and I dare say, our professor in the, in the room, is the same reason why he's championing this, why he's pushing this. Because you can't see results, you can't see something that can change the lives of people, and you keep quiet, and say you don't know what they are going to say, you don't know if they are going to accept it. So we have more testimonies like that, this one is vitiligo, they say vitiligo does not have any cause, the condition, see what the product did for somebody in six months. The heart vitiligo, the skin came back normal. Six months of usage, the man is from India, and we have so many more testimonies, I don't have time to run through everything, this was the case of heart problem, you know, infertility, E T C. Now how do you assess the product, like I said, pick up a package, so for the platinum packages, we have the one that goes for two thousand six hundred and eighty eight dollars, and we have the one that goes for two thousand four hundred and eighteen dollars, this choice is yours. But the one, the platinum one has more advantage than two, because the difference in the product is much more um worth it than the difference in the price. For the price difference, you get more products than if you are considering the um, the price difference. Then we have um junior platinum package that goes for one thousand three hundred and fifty four dollars, and our exchange rate as at now is nine hundred and seventy naira to a dollar, so just multiply this by nine seventy to get the naira value. And mind you, the value is going to change, because we know what dollar is saying now, it's over a thousand, it's about one thousand two hundred or so now, but we are still using nine seventy, so. If you're going to get the package, this is your best time to get it, the gold package is going for nine seventy eight um dollars, while the silver package is going for two hundred and three dollars, we have another silver package that goes for one hundred and fifty two dollars. And the bronze pack is going for one hundred and twelve dollar, this is where my time permits me to run, um let me hand over back to our host. To take us through the rest of the talk today, thank you so much, I hope I didn't bore you, and I hope I didn't take all the time.
I am so, so excited that every, please, let's, let's just give our reactions, show appreciation, she's done a marvelous job. Even me, despite the number of times I've heard about this, I am still spellbound. When Didi takes us through all that Phyto Science products about what it does, it's simply amazing. I keep hearing, I keep, and like I'm just in awe with what these products do. Some of the testimonies I get to hear, I love, I almost like pinch myself, did this happen? And yet, because the people that are telling us that are experiencing this, this first half information, we have no reason to doubt it. And truly, like my mom said yesterday, she said, this is God's miracle for mankind, I wonder why my mom would say so, she has experienced real testimonies from me. Now, because we are looking at time, I'm going to ask Professor Adeloe, who is the chief host incidentally on this platform, to just tell us. One, two, three of testimonies, some of those spellbound, when he, when he's telling us those tests, when I'm hearing it, I sit on the edge of my, of my chair, like, ah, ah. Did this happen, how, when, and yet, these things did happen, like, life, blood and flesh. So Prof, please tell us a few of these testimonies before we talk about how we can assess. So Prof, please tell us a few of these testimonies before we talk about how we can assess this product and the money part of it. Professor Adeloe, for, for those of you that don't know, he is a professor of physics. I don't mind saying he's a first class. And, um, we, um, head of the department of physics in prestigious, uh, University of Lagos. I've known him for over twenty years. And when we talk, I sit and I listen because this is for twenty. Prof, let's hear you.
Thank you so much, Mama Anka. Yes, yes. That's my mother in the business of phyto science. I've known Mama Anka for, Mama Anka is not twenty years, about thirty years now, ma.
Yeah, I'm still counting twenty years or something. You're right.
And that's why, when she told me about phyto science, I could not but attend because how could she invite me to a meeting and I would not attend? But my conviction was zero. So I was going to tell her after the third Zoom meeting that I was no longer interested in attending meetings until I Googled stem cells. I stopped, Didi was one presenting that day. Didi, uh, I don't think there's any presenter like Didi in the world. Mama Anka, true or false?
I agree.
I stopped Didi and said, ah, I don't think people are seeing up to ten percent of what I read in the last five minutes. I'm signing up. And I have some money with me, I was going to buy shares then. So I just diverted the money, the money into signing up on the seventeenth of June, twenty twenty during the COVID. And since then, what has used me to touch so many lives. So thank you so much, Mama Anka, for bringing me into this business. Didi, thank you so much for being such a wonderful presenter.
Prof, you are muted. We can't hear you. Sorry.
Hello, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, you can.
For forty years, I battled, I battled sinusitis. I had given up hope. Doctor said there was no solution. And then other people said there was no solution. So I was resigned to my feet because it was destroying my mouth, my gums, my teeth, I'm going.
Sorry.
I don't. Please kindly just let me get some water, please.
Yes, please. So as he's getting water, I'll be telling you because I've heard this story, you know. What is the first, is the best person that knows time? So here was Prof, like I keep saying, anytime he tells a story, I see him over forty years, four decades. I know when I first met him, the first few years, he told me that he had the, he likes eating bread. And by the time he eats bread, he has this reaction because he has a problem with his sinusus. And that gives him a lot of trouble. I didn't know how serious the problem was until he used phyto science products. And then called. Me, I'll just continue this story because I always talk about it. Five days after he started using phyto science products, incidentally, I was only double stem cell, then I'm feeling. He called me, I guess he was waiting for me to wake up that morning, very early. He said, Auntie, in those days, he used to call me Auntie, now he calls me Mom. Auntie, can you believe that I spat? And my saliva was white. I was like, wow. So then he now started telling us the details of why that himself was a miracle. Prof, you want to continue or should I continue?
Okay, ma. Uh, let me take it up.
Yes.
Okay, my mouth was so dry that, thank you so much, ma, that, uh, my tongue stuck to my upper palate by the time I woke up in the morning. Throughout the day, my mouth was without saliva. And you know what happens in such a situation? Bacteria will make your mouth, they are breeding ground. So I had gum disease already. I was already looking at life without teeth. What problems comes up when you have, uh, to use dentures? Because you also have all sorts of problems coming up with dentures. And as she said, in just five days, my saliva turned normal. What people say, what doctors said had no cure, was actually cured. And my tongue used to be so heavy that, um, I had to use to stick to scrape and scrape and scrape. Just to make sure that my mouth was not just too bad. I guess I can go on and on about my sinusitis, but that will cover a very small, uh, 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 not a small book, a very big book. Just my mouth alone or is it my nose? But I have so many other testimonies to talk about. So let me move on to. A few of my testimonies. I have over seven hundred personal testimonies.
Whoa, seven hundred now.
I'm just going to share for the sake of. Yes, ma. What is this, ma? Hello?
Go on, go on, Prof. I'm just amazed. I used to think it was just three fifty.
No, it's over seven hundred testimonies.
Wow.
I met this woman on Facebook. In fact, I can't remember, I never knew the woman who referred her to me. Did someone refer you to me to inquire, to you to inquire about your products on enlargement? Processed enlargement and shingles pains and all sorts of things. But the main testimony did not come from all this. She has a sister, an older sister who never got pregnant because she had so many problems. Let me just go on straight to some of the problems the sister had. Fibroid, you can see so many issues that I cannot even begin to mention. Uh, poison, low, high F S H, ovarian reserve is very low, so many. If I see polyps, so many, uh, she has a cyst, ovarian cyst. And just imagine what this woman was going through. And then she took her products. And within a month, the fibroid came with the menses. And let's see, that's why she has this question. Does this shrink fibroids and how does it come out of the body? Now let's see what she said. She saw her period, her period started first February and today she saw, she is bleeding a lot. I thought such big things coming out, like she gave birth, big, big clots of blood with some sort of kind of whitish stuff. And I told her that is the fibroid. And then, within a year, this woman put to bed and gave birth to twins. See, good morning, sir. I just asked, how's daddy, mommy and your sister? She said, yes, she gave birth to twins two weeks ago. Now, that is wonderful. Within a year, the woman put to bed and it was. Now, this is prediabetes, acid reflux, joint pain and chest pain. This woman saw me on Facebook. I think she came across some of my posts and reluctantly she warmed up to my, uh, posts. She kept asking questions. She was doubting and doubting and doubting. Until the day I was honored as a diamond in phyto science. And she saw how two of my students came out to greet me, to hug me. And that was what gave her the confidence to sign up. And then she had, she was battling prediabetes, acid reflux, joint pain, chest pain, all sorts of her health issues. She's a nurse in the U, uh, UK. And you know, a nurse has to be very skeptical about things. And when I told her that her BP was going to go permanently, she did not believe me. But after six months, she went for a test because there it is managed to take a test. And then, this is what she said. A couple of months into her therapy, she reported her skin and nails were looking so much better. That's my sixth case of diabetes completed. Completed means they are, they all eat normal food and stopped it taking our products long ago, not on any medications for diabetes or any other ailment. Now she responded. When she saw me, put up this testimony. Please educate people that they need, still need to continue to use the therapy. This will keep the figures within normal range and will not have negative impact on kidney functions. Diabetes and I B P are not curable but, um, can be kept within normal region if you stick to the therapy. I was prediabetic, I'm now normal, but my figures are high within normal range. We have, but need to continue with therapy. I don't think phyto science can cure diabetes, in my opinion, please. The pain is still there, but that was, uh, all that went later. Uh, she said she was going to need some products. That was, um, so many months ago now, about a year ago. And then up till now, this woman has not needed any product. Now she believes that phyto science products can cure high blood pressure and diabetes. Now, secret cell anemia, I've handled eleven cases, eleven successful cases out of eleven cases of secret cell anemia. And the last time some of these, uh, people took the product was two and a half years ago. Here is one of them. Good morning, my health has improved significantly. Before this girl signed up, she called five other people, maybe parents, the children, these, uh, individuals that took the products for secret cell anemia. And we're quite okay. She called five different people before she decided to sign up. And then you cannot see what she said. My health has improved significantly. I'm very fine. She even said she put on a healthy amount of weight. And now let others know that secret cell anemia has a solution, a permanent solution. She said, yes, so. Now, the united organs, this man, Mama Anka, am I exceeding my time?
Uh, you are good to go, baby. Yes, like.
I just rushed it, ma.
Yes.
All right, ma. The, this, um, man, the son saw me on Facebook and then told me that his mother had issues and would need our products. But, um, suddenly she told me the mother was, uh, going for dialysis. And I asked him, why, why dialysis? Is she showing any signs of, um, renal failure? And he said, no. Why subject? He said, doctor said, just wanted to kick start, uh, kidneys. Just by one, uh, dialysis. But the following day, the man was in ICU and he told me that doctors wanted to perform another dialysis on her. And that's how the woman died. But this was what scared the man that made him to now get the product for his father for three months. And at the end of three months, I was just finishing one of my Zoom meetings, which I presented, and he called and said, daddy went for a test. And then after three months of the product, all the vital organs were in perfect condition. So the product we don't ask for that, the only three months and the changes were so visible with tremendous testimonies. Let me just, I'm trying to save time. All vital organs, everything was functioning normally. This coloysis, I'll skip it. Secret cell, another secret cell anemia, this woman was referred, the parents were referred to me by the chemist. I mean, the, yes, that, um, was, uh, handling the woman and the child. And then the boy was so bad that, uh, the man said, she had, the parents had to see me that, if you see how worried the man was when he came to see me. And I can tell you, ever since they started taking, giving the products to the child, the child has not had any secret cell anemia crisis. So, bloody eyes and high blood pressure. I have to give, I have to, okay, let us, Mama Anka. I can't go talk about this woman. She was changing her clothes ten times a day. And for that reason, the mother said she should come home the first of January, twenty twenty-two. And we sent products to her because the elder brother was my classmate in secondary school. And then within eleven days, she did not need to change her clothes anymore. And then the following month, the fibroid dropped off her body completely.
Wow. Wow.
Sleep dis, this man I must talk about, he suffered sleep dys and could not sit for many months. And then the brother-in-law referred him to me. And then he just took products and within a day, within a day, he sat up and attended an interview and got a job in Joss. And then the doctors are going to carry out an operation on his spine. Twenty eighty percent, uh, success, twenty, uh, failure, twenty success, eighty percent failure. Even the uncle in the US said, even the remaining twenty percent, the twenty percent that are successful, half of them will still end up on the wheelchair. This man was looking at the wheelchair already. And then in eleven days, he said he was going to tell his doctor that he didn't need the operation anymore. So he went there and then I chatted him the following day. Why did you tell your doctor? He said he didn't need to tell the doctor anything. The doctor examined him and said he had made tremendous project, uh, uh, progress. And then recommended physiotherapy. Three weeks later, this man was driving all over Lagos. And then he gifted his, uh, brother-in-law a car. Mama Anka, I think I have to stop here.
Thank you so very, very much. Astonishing testimonies. Is it the one of the woman that, I mean, if you have to change it sentence again? My dear, the ladies in the house, they know what it means. And that stopped. Or the one who was so bad that she could not even conceive, imagine all those women have problem in one person. And not only were they corrected, she delivered and delivered twins. I mean, that is simply amazing. So this, just like our presenter said, uh, product, Didi said, this actually works from the cell. And so there's practically nothing, practically nothing that these products cannot take care of. This is testament to that. Now, some of you may just be wondering, okay, now we want to get this, mostly that we're talking about, so how do I get, how do I get it? I had a friend, my son's friend, uh, sent the link to her father and he watched it and he said, yeah. And you hear that all these thousands of dollars that he hears about, that's the problem. Even yesterday, I had the presentation, one of my, one of my classmates, she said, oh, she really, really likes it, but the money is the issue. What she did here yesterday, some of it are here today, you will hear very soon. So we don't just profile, um, the health products, we also profile how you can assess it and how you can keep assessing it with ease. For many of us who have been in phyto science for years, I have been here since fifteen seventeen. That in the products is not a strain for us anymore. Because you find a means by which you can get the products easily. And then you can also lead comfortably. For me, I stumbled upon it. I didn't commit to it for the sake of. But when I found out that I was earning good money with it, Prof that just spoke to you now is a blue diamond. He's not going to tell you what a blue diamond does because women want to go to eating, eating witches. So as, uh, is Didi also spoke, blue diamonds means they have earned fifty thousand US dollars in bonuses alone.
Minimum.
Minimum, minimum, more often than not, more than that. Because you just think, uh, fifty thousand, then you have more than that. How did they do this? How did they achieve this? How does someone like me, who knew nothing, zero result about network marketing, become an expert in it? Had it, Prof, who said he doesn't, he's not network marketing compliant? In fact, he got interested in it. When he first asked me, I said, no, you need to buy a package. He said, eh? How much am I earning as a lecturer? I know, I don't know anything about network marketing. Now he is a guru. How did we get into this? Why are we passionate about this? And Prof is going to let us know two, three methods or ways through which you can earn what you earn in phyto science. We know we said we are not going to take much of your time, we're just doing that quickly. Prof.
Thank you so much, Mama Anka. So this is a, uh, compensation plan for phyto science. There are eleven ways of earning. Uh, there's also retail and profit, but we're not going to talk about that. Indeed, that's one aspect we don't really emphasize upon. Because we are not encouraged to stock our houses with products just because we want to rank and things like that. We rank based on the amount of money you have earned referring people, as I'm going to see now. So I'm going to talk, we encourage you to buy products because you know they cannot sell the products. To stock your house with those products, any so-called points, just because they want to get it or product, they themselves cannot afford and they cannot sell. So I'm going to talk about, um, how you can benefit from, uh, the compensation plan. Now suppose you sign up as a silver member. I'm going to see how much it takes to be a silver member. That is, okay, we have seen that already. Didi has already spoken about that. So there's no need to talk about that anymore. Suppose you are a silver member, you sign up another silver member, you're going to get a two point eight five, uh, dollars. But if you sign up a higher package that's gold, uh, package, you're going to get eighty-eight dollars. If you sign up a platinum package, you get one hundred and thirty-five dollars. You can see the amount of money you are going to get, you multiply each of this by nine hundred and sixty naira. It's an amazing amount of money. Now suppose you are a gold member and you sign up a silver, you still get a two point eight five dollars because silver cannot carry more than that, two point eight five referral bonus. This is just referral bonus. And this money is going to drop into your account immediately. You click, enter. Once you sign up the person, it's not a matter of come back tomorrow, come back in two weeks' time or come back at the end of the month. Indeed, if I do science were to tell me that, as you come back in two weeks' time to get my money, I would not have gone into it at all. Now if you sign up a fellow gold, uh, package, you're going to get one hundred and seventy-seven point seven five dollars. You multiply by that, by ninety, ninety-sixty, you can see the amount of money you're going to get. If you sign up a gold member, you get a whopping two twenty-five dollars. Now suppose you are a platinum member, you sign up a silver member, as I said earlier. The person you really get is two point eight five dollars, because silver cannot handle more than twenty-two point five dollars. You sign up a plat, uh, a gold, uh, package, you're going to get one seventy-seven point seven five dollars. You sign up a, uh, a platinum package, you're going to get four hundred and fifty dollars. But then you multiply four fifty by nine sixty. That's a lot of money, that's around four hundred and twelve thousand. Now that is the amount of money, the kind of money you can make in phyto science. Now, if you are a platinum member, you can sign people up. That is, if a silver wants to sign up a member, a new member, then he has to come to you and say, please help sign this person up for me. You sign up a silver, you get two point one nine dollars. You sign up a gold, eleven point eight five, that is, we process a gold, eleven point eight five dollars. And if you process a platinum, that's going to be thirty dollars. Now imagine you process five, ten, twenty of this in a day. You can imagine the amount of money you are going to realize. Now, this is pairing bonus. This is where phyto science is so beautiful. You see, the people, S one and S two, these packages don't have, don't have to be placed there by you. You see, you up here, but once these two appear under your legs, you get fourteen point six dollars.
I'm sorry, Prof, are you sharing?
Yes.
No, you're not sharing, you are not even sharing at all, you didn't click the share button.
Let me.
Yes, I was, I was wondering. I thought it was only me.
Okay. So pardon me.
Okay. So you're on the pairing bonus.
So let me stop sharing and share again.
Okay, it showed a little bit, two seconds ago.
Okay. Okay, can I see it now?
Yes.
Hello, ma.
Yes, you can see it, you can see it now.
I think I've gone beyond this, let's just go to, this one did not show, did it?
Um, no, it didn't show, but you, you're just talking about pairing.
Okay.
Yeah, maybe she just run through it again because nothing showed, yeah.
Okay, yes, yes, yes. You are a silver member and you sign up another silver, you get a two point eight five dollars. You sign up a gold member, you get eighty-eight dollars. You sign up a platinum, you get one hundred and thirty-five dollars. Now suppose you are a gold member, you sign up a silver, you get a two point eight five dollars, a gold, one seventy-seven point seven five dollars, a platinum, two twenty-five dollars. And if you are platinum, you sign up a silver, that's two point eight five dollars, a gold, one seventy-seven point seven five dollars, and a platinum, four hundred and fifty dollars. I think this is nine sixty, you can imagine the amount of money you're going to make just by referring people. And this money drops straight into phyto science account automatically as soon as you click. Your password and enter. Now, silver, if you sign up a silver as a platinum member, if you sign up a silver, you get two point one nine dollars. You sign up a gold, that is, if you process, you sign up of a gold, you get eleven point eight five dollars. And you process a platinum, you get thirty dollars. This is available, this kind of money is available only if you are a platinum member. Now suppose you are already a member of phyto science and then two accounts appear under your legs. They might have been placed there by you yourself, or maybe some other person in your team, a person who signed you up. Place one of these people under your legs. As soon as there's a pairing under your legs, you get fourteen point six dollars, a pairing of silver. If you get another one, for instance, Kudi and Ade coming in, you're going to get another fourteen point six dollars. On and on like that, for every pair of two persons joining your organization as a silver, you get fourteen point six dollars. You can imagine what will happen if you get about ten of this in a day, that's a lot of money. Suppose you are a gold member, okay, there's gold packages appearing under your legs. Add each pairing of a gold under your legs, you get seventy-nine dollars. You can imagine the amount of seventy-nine dollars you are going to get in a day if you have several pairings under your legs. Now, what if you say platinum, you can imagine any two hundred dollars on each pairing, that's a lot of money. Multiply that by nine sixty, you're going to make a lot of money. Yeah, this is a ten-month income projection. Now you can see the amount of money you can make, even as a silver member, fourteen thousand dollars, that's the maximum you can make. As a gold, you can make eighty thousand dollars and as a platinum, two hundred and four thousand dollars. Now, you don't want to comment as a silver if you can help it, do you? The, there's a group promo, Didi, is the promo, Mama, Anka, is the promo still on?
Um, the promo is now for junior platinum, not gold.
Okay, okay. Then this is the amount of, kind of money that people earn every day in phyto science, five sixty-five point nine nine dollars, five sixteen point three four dollars. If I am unlimited, you can earn tens of thousands of dollars a day depending on how you work. And I can assure you, you have the best team in phyto science, the world over. You have Mamanka, you have Didi, and then we are backed by so many testimonies that. Now, let me tell you, whatever you want us to do, talk to people on your behalf, organize Zoom meetings on your behalf, we are all willing to do that for you. Whatever support we can give you, we happily give you. Now, this is the ranking, if you earn three thousand dollars, you are one star. Seven thousand dollars, two star, fifteen thousand dollars, three star. Thirty thousand dollars, you're a diamond, fifty thousand dollars, you're a blue diamond. Amazon, the people have earned this in this meeting today. Uh, black diamond, one hundred thousand dollars, natural diamond, one hundred thousand dollars, one hundred thousand dollars for crown diamond. One hundred thousand dollars for crown director, on and on to royal crown, which is three million dollars. Uh, do we have people who have earned this? Of course, we do. Now, once you become a diamond, you have the opportunity of sharing part of the, uh, of the, uh. Dividends coming to members of this company, in the sense that, as if you are, you are a shareholder. So you can have a maximum of two units, three units, depending on the kind of, uh, level of diamond. Uh, now, these are the people who have made so much money from this business, so we are not just talking about abstract money. And Mr. Bismarck and Mr. Olaoki have made five hundred thousand dollars. This wonderful woman here, that too, Aziza Binti Rizali, has made well over two million dollars. Now, this is a patient, she has made over two hundred thousand dollars. Uh, Alali Remaken and Alexiguri have made over one hundred thousand dollars. And then this I could have made over fifty thousand dollars. You can see our presenter today, Mary Tinoye Didi, and then myself, yeah? And then diamonds are those who have made thirty thousand dollars. You can see, you can make all this money, it's not just paper money. So what are the benefits of being in phyto science? You make residual income, you have financial freedom, you are your own boss, you have time freedom. And you can travel for free. And we all know that we all need the extra money we can make. Things are very easy in Nigeria, as you can see now. And there's no way we can be sure that things are going to get tougher, I would say. Because things will get easier and easier, but I hope you know what I'm talking about, you need to make just more money as you can make in this business. And I'm trying to rush through everything, and we have seen this before. And then, well, you are in the right business, you have the right company, you have the right products, right pay plan. And then, remember, you make money by simply sharing this opportunity with others. I would like to acknowledge the presence of Doctor Adewoye, Olabody Adewoye. You are most welcome with your team, wonderful team with us tonight. Once again, I would like to say thank you to Didi for such a wonderful presentation and, um, Mamanka. My wonderful, yes, I, 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 I knew Doctor Adewoye nineteen ninety-seven, ninety-eight, there about. Long, long, long ago in UI.
Twenty-five years, twenty-six, twenty-seven years ago.
Yeah, we met in mass department. We met in mass department, I was there for a program then.
Beautiful, beautiful, we have, we have, we have a lot of eggheads in our midst here. I also want to acknowledge the presence of Professor Olushola Lado Koo. She's here and she's here even with her son too, we're here right, right from the beginning. So we have a mixture of intellectuals right here in the room with us. I know that's, that's one of the things that Prof's team are made up of, professors, doctors, and so what are we saying here? If the, one of the things Prof told me when I told him, now come and join us, I said, ah. That the intellectuals, these people in the academics, that they are the most difficult to persuade. And as it is now, so many of them are right here, why? Because the testimonies are real. Yeah.
Fifty, ma, more than fifty people signed up in my faculty. I'm trying to look from other faculties.
That tells you something, that tells you something. I don't know if we have questions, I think most of the questions may have been answered. Somebody asked, how does it get the products? The product is for hair loss. And so I think that has been answered, any of these products will actually deal with hair loss. Particularly the spray and then of course a double stem cell, because, uh, an opeshia, I think that's what hair loss is called. It takes care of the root, the cell that takes care of your hair roots. You have testimonies here, where we reside, you know, uh, this, I don't know what the universe calls it, uh, women that are rich. They, they, they have, they have hair, hair loss and then they started growing it back. My own younger brother told me that he had a, a bit of bald patch, not really bald, but his hair was thinning in one place. He wasn't taking it for that, but he noticed that when he started taking it, his hair became dense over there. Same thing with my dear professor here, my dear son here, ever since he's been taking this, his hair texture has changed, these are men. So let's talk, let's talk about women, that's the marvelous.
Mamanka, look at me now.
Okay, now, look at him now.
Look at my hair, ma, look at my hair.
Look at his hair.
I was going bald some years back.
Three years ago. The hairline has changed. So this is how exciting, isn't our products are? And then, um, I think Doctor Adewoye has been asking for the PDF soft copy. This is how the academics talk. Yeah, he wants to be able to look at it and digest it further and further. You meet with Prof, please, if you have any other questions, you can either raise your hand or go right back to whoever it is that invited you. And we will deal with it. I thank everyone of you, everybody that have been here, have been here, right from the beginning to the end. The one person that stepped out, she just sent me a text now, that she had a patient, uh, in the hospital and that she got a call. Person just got out of the theater and that was why she had to go and that she's coming back, I don't know if she's going to meet us again. And in fact, she's recording it, you can imagine, we didn't even know that. So I make bold to say we have had value for our one hour thirty minutes. It's exactly one hour thirty minutes since we started now, a lot has impacted. Now the call to action, you have heard, if you are a member here already. This tells you that there's a need to take this word out. So many people are still dying and suffering unnecessarily because they haven't had knowledge of what we are talking about, knowledge is art. So it is your turn to share this information with someone else. No need to suffer all that you are suffering because the solution is right here, you heard Didi. They know it's hard to solution, but not getting to the person. Also, if you have issues with earning extra, I mean, anyone needs, everybody needs extra cash, Didi. Even if you are earning a lot, you want extra because that is what our economy is speaking now. So why not simply by doing the right thing, doing the normal thing as a matter of fact, I tell you, when something would happen to you. You tell other people, it's natural, as human beings, that is the way we are geared to act. And when you share, you earn. For many people, for, for quite a number in our, in our, in our business, in our team. They just went into have extra money and then it became the main thing, I'm one of them, I'm one of them. It's so easy to earn here, easy because you are doing what is just natural, you are sharing information with someone else. About what has happened with you. I thank you very much for being here, please don't waste time, share the information, jump right in with us. Come and share and partake of what we are talking about here, don't waste a minute longer. And so in the absence, yes.
Mamanka. Please tell them about Osato, Osato and me. Because I did not commit early enough, whatever I do appears under the leg of us.
Oh, yes, I mustn't forget that, I mustn't forget that, you see.
The earlier you commit, the better.
I have two, two main children, Prof is one of them, the second one is called Osato. Didi was hosting our team, we all, we became under one big umbrella and then went. The Apple Millionaire is the platform that we are growing in. And what joined the COVID, Osato was someone had signed up, it wasn't serious, but. COVID came and she sat down and she listened and started growing. And shortly after, Osato became serious, Prof signed up. And guess what? He showed you that figure now, where people who are up of you can put placements. Just by being there shortly before Prof, everything Prof does rolls up to her. So she's earning where she did not sue, because she came in any. This is the power of double earning of the pairing system of phyto science. So if I'm someone in the room here, had to quickly do her registration. Because if somebody else who is going to come, come before her, he's going to lose big money. That tells you why it is important for you not to procrastinate. By procrastinating, you may just miss a chance of somebody who will come up under you. Prof, Didi and I, we've already filled up our two necks, so whatever we do comes under somebody else. Osato did not, did not know Prof, Prof, before they came to phyto science. But now she knows Prof very well, because whatever Prof does is coming up to her. I placed Prof under her. So please, don't wait and regret, whatever you need to do, do it now. Thank you so very much. Prof, you have something else to say? It's your call.
No, ma, Mamanka, you have finished all the, whatever I have wanted to say. Thank you so much.
Thank you so very much. Didi is a big auntie.
Thank you.
She's a mentor, she's a mother, she's a guru, she's a coach. And you got a bit of what she can do. And like Prof said, we are, we are always here to support you. We are always here to support you, that's the good thing about our business here. Thank you for staying put, for letting. For enjoying with us, come fully on board please, don't waste a minute longer. God bless you. Tomorrow, actually, um, Phyto Science Nigeria has a presentation that has to, we'll call it the proven system. This is purely the business part of it. If you want to know how you can get on your feet and become serious and run with the vision of earning money easily. Using our products to leverage, come here with us again tomorrow. Uh, Prof will send links to you if you are interested. And anybody that has any question that needs to know more, please reach out to whoever it is that invited you. Thank you once again, God bless you all and have a good night, Chris.
Thank you for having me, have a blessed night.
Thank you, thank you, and thank you.
Thank you, thank you so much, Mamanka, thank you so much, Doctor Adewoye.
Yeah, bro, thank you.
Thanks so much. And everybody in the room. Tonight, thank you so much for honoring our invitation.
Professor Aladukun, thank you for coming to Lu, I see you.
Prof Aladukun.
And my sister.
Welcome, sir.
Thank you for inviting us, ma.
Thank you.
Joy, thank you, thank you. And, um, every person that is here, God bless you.
Good night.
Have a good night.
Amen, good night, nice.